Yeah, on there. Okay. All right, it is 6:00 PM, so I will call this meeting to order. If we could rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Mrs. Powell.
No.
Yeah.
That's here. Yeah, Mr. Owens is here. We'll open up the floor for any public comments for items that are not on our agenda for this evening. I'd like to address something else. Anybody in the Zoom call that listen? Okay, thank you. Make the motion that we approve the agenda as it was presented to us. Have support for that?
Motion.
Port.
Support.
Anybody see anything on the agenda that needs to be tweaked?
All in favor of approving the agenda? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you. Minutes in your packet on page three are the meeting minutes from the April 10th, 2025 meeting. We need a motion to approve those minutes, please.
I make a motion.
I support.
Motion, support. Anybody see anything in those minutes that need to be addressed? Okay, all in favor of approving those minutes? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Thank you. Folks, any conflicts of interest or ex parte communication regarding this matter before us tonight that anybody needs to report on? Saying none, we will move to our item of new business tonight, which is a request, a variance request made by Jessica Woodward for 187 Johnson Street, Cedar Springs. So we will open the public hearing for this. You have in your packet, starting on page six, is the application that was submitted by the applicant. And then the following documentation in there. We have the city planners' report and the code enforcement officers' report. There is a letter of support that was in there, but you were given tonight a updated copy of that, so we can retract the one that is in our packets and we'll replace it with the one that came in there. So, the public hearing is open, so we'll allow if the applicant would like to address us, if you could, if you want to, you don't have to.
Yeah, I'm gonna do it.
Okay, so if you would just, so that we can, the clerk can keep the minutes, if you just say your name and address and.
Right.
Johnston, Cedar Springs, Michigan, 49319.
Yep, yep.
So, my wife Jessica and I have lived at 187 Johnson here for 14 years. I've come here today to hopefully find a way to keep the parking area we had installed in July. We went to City Hall to pay and get for a permit, but in our naivety, we didn't realize we had to wait for approval of the permit, and we had this parking area installed. We've been parking there for six years without any issue, and it was starting to get run it up, a two-track and a yard kind of a deal. And we thought, well, why not have something installed that'd be a little more permit, so we're not getting stuck in the snow and things. On July 31st, Deborah DeGroot stopped over to inform us that we did not wait for approval and that we are either going to be fined or have to take it out. We asked that we could, we asked what we could do to keep it. She told us we're gonna have to talk with somebody to get back with us. Once she got back with us, she told me we could appeal by filling out an application and paying a fee. I also spoke with the city manager Darla. At one point, she suggested that I ask my neighbors if we can park in their driveways or the edges of their yards and our street. I did talk with them, and they did not agree with that solution. We can't park on the road November through April as the snowplows run. We can't park at the end of the dead end, as that's where the snow is plowed to, and there's a driveway there and a fire hydrant on the opposite side of the driveway. We can't park in front of our home on the street. The mail person won't drop off our mail. And the neighbors can't back out of their driveway across the street.
Again?
So we park in front of our house on the edge of the street. The mailbox is there, and the mail person can't drop off the mail. There's a house directly across from us, and it inhibits them from backing out of their driveway, too.
Okay.
Yeah, where was I? Hold on. Bear with me. Our neighbors really don't want us parking on their street behind their driveways or in their yards, which is understandable. Our original driveway has a single wide driveway. We can only park cars single file in it. And we have four cars, and everybody works a different shift, so you're playing, you know, car Tetris, trying to get things out. And all of the other homes in our own have double wide driveways and garages, so they don't have to go single file in our driveway or garage. The parking area doesn't inhibit the city at all. In fact, it'll help keep the road clear for the city, and it improves the overall appearance of the area. That's all I got. Thank you for listening to me.
Are there any other public comments on this?
My name is Earl. Here I live at 181 Johnston, right next door to them, and there's.
Head to the north and south.
South.
Okay, thank you.
And when, there was a couple of times where the kids did park in the, on the side of the road and me backing out. I got a big truck. And it's a four-door, and it's not paying attention at 6:30 in the morning. You know, I almost got one, but and we live on a dead-end street, so that's the problem, not really having parking. I agree with Brian. It's not really feasible for us to part different ways on the road there. And having the fire hydrant right back there, and you know, that's so I guess, I have no problem with them, you know, having that driveway. And it's very easily, if we had to, you know, once they get older or whatever and move out or whatever, you know, they can be changed, so I really don't have a problem with it. It's just parking alongside the road. That's where I kind of get scared about, you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, this is also a comment.
This is leather.
Yeah. So that's the third.
Are there any, anybody online at Zoom that? Okay, any other public comments? Okay, then saying none, we will close the public hearing at this time, so we can deliberate. I was looking through the city planners' report, which is on page 11, I believe it is, in our packet, if I want to refer to that. The in order, or the ZBA board to grant a variance, which in essence, we're giving somebody to permission to break one of the ordinances that one of the city has passed. There's some pretty strict requirements, and one of them is, you know, we have to meet all five of the criteria. We have to be able to say yes to all of the criteria that are necessary to approve that, and our city planner finds really problems, who I think with all five of the points that are there. I find it hard to disagree with what our city planner has laid out for us. I don't you could probably pick one. I'm not really sure that there's.
What's he saying? That's wrong.
Well, so the first one is that there has to be an exceptional or extraordinary circumstances that's applying to the property. I don't know what's exceptional about this house as opposed to any other house that you would pick. The second condition is that it is a situation that is, for that piece of property, is really allowing the owner to not have something that other people have. Not giving them a second driveway is not, there's, there's not very many homes in town that have two driveways. So, I mean, we can go through all the rest of them, but all we have to do is just, if we say no to one, then those are that's it. We have to be able to say yes to all five of the points, and I'm, I'm not sure how we would say yes to any of the points. So my, my read on that would be that I would make the motion that we deny the variance as it was requested.
I have a question.
For them, as far as when you did get the variance, did you, not a variance, not, I'm sorry, the approval for is it?
They filed for a permit.
That's right. Thank you, thank you.
Right, right. The permit was not approved.
And you assumed that it was?
No, that's why I mentioned in my, and it was very naive of me and us to assume, yeah, we wanted to do this. We obviously can't. We know better now, but I didn't think it was that big of a deal, because we had been parking cars there for the last six years. It'd get it stuck in the snow and things, so I thought, well, if we put a little parking pad in there, not even a permanent one necessarily, but the parking pad in there gives us somewhere to, it gives us somewhere to get the kids off the road. We're not getting stuck in the snow. We're not blocking the plows. We're not blocking the neighbors. We're not blocking the fire hydrants. So, so yeah, while that is true, I didn't wait for approval for the, for the application.
Okay. Okay. Is my question?
Oh, did you just pour this pad? You didn't pour your driveway? You just poured a pad?
It's, what it is, is it's actual. Ball millings for the driveway.
There's a picture of it.
Oh, yeah, there is a picture.
2122. So my biggest thing is that, what is, what is wrong with the actual driveway that you have? I understand that. You said it's.
Hold on, I need to pause for just a second here. They're not asking for a variance on their current driveway, so the current driveway is not part of our discussion. They're asking for a variance to put in a second driveway, so that, that's really.
Right, okay.
The first driveway is not our concern. That's a driveway that already exists, so we're just talking about putting in a second driveway.
And of the criteria, we have to go through those five criterias, right? And we have to say yes to all of them.
May I speak?
Absolutely.
Point one, A, exceptional narrowness and shallowness or shape of the specific property on the effective date of the ordinance of which the chapter was derived. There's not a lot of room there. By reason of exceptional topographic conditions or other extraordinary situation, land, the building, the structure. There is not a lot of room there. No place to go with more parking. It's an older house. What do you think? Is it 75?
39.
39, okay. So, I've heard this argument before, just because you have more than two cars, you shouldn't, you shouldn't have two cars, which is kind of frightening. Okay, by reason of the use of or development of this property, immediately adjoining the property in question, whereby the literal enforcement of these requirements of this chapter would involve practical difficulties, which you've had. Any other physical situation on the land, building, or structure deemed by this board of appeals, extraordinary. I drove around town today just to see driveway situations. I saw more than 50 cars parked in the yard, driveways through the lawn, parked on sidewalks, parked on the city rightways. So, and I just there's a lot of houses in Cedar Springs that are very old. They have only room for one car. And I, I just didn't, I looked at your driveway. I didn't see that it was a huge problem, in my opinion, but as a ZBA, we have to go by these variance stipulations and rules.
Well, does the fact that all the neighbors have double driveways weigh in on this at all? We only have a single one?
We're not, you're not asking for a variance on your current driveway. You're asking for a variance for a second driveway. Yeah.
The variance will not be significantly detrimental to the adjacent property in the surrounding neighborhood. So it's just part of the variance parts that I'm reading. The variance will not impair the intent or the purpose of this chapter. The immediate practical difficulty causing the need of this variance request was not created by the affirmative action of the applicant. You were driving in your yard, which is totally illegal in this town. And
Sir.
Oh, yes. Rose, you're correct. We have an ordinance that states there should be no yard parking. However, the council has, since I've been here for seven and a half years, is not wanting to enforce that, so it has not been enforced. So I don't know if that helps you, but.
I would think that when somebody steps up and says, we don't want to park in our yard. We don't have any place else to park. Maybe we should use some common sense and say common sense. ZBA, we still have rules that we have to follow. Sometimes we have to have variances.
Anyone else? Thoughts?
I do want to say something. Number of dead-end streets in this town. Same problem. And it is your problem. Because like you said, somebody could be parked out here in the street, and at 5:00 in the morning, when a lot of us leave, you could easily crash another vehicle. But you also have kids playing on the streets. And if you've got vehicles planted out there, we're just asking for, sooner or later, there will be trouble from a danger standpoint. I mean, I live on Seventh Street. It's a match to this. It's a dead end. It's got a fire plug. You know, and I know where you guys are coming from. I just wish I could see a picture of your, you didn't put these together. Yeah. I just wanted to see where.
Well, the both sides.
So you, you have two, you have two separate driveways?
Yes, sir. There's the actual driveway question. This is, this is a view of the industry.
Oh, I don't know why I hit that one. Right.
So that is one.
Yep, that's the one we have enough, but.
But I know that we have city planner or something, but
Lead. A really difficult position to be in, because I, I understand that, you know, because of the, how we have the plows and being a dead end, they go down and around, you know? And I've been debating over this for a while, you know, for the last week since we've got this. And but as a board, we have those five rules that we have to go by. And we're not the zoning board that makes the decision if, you know, we need to make a change in the entire zoning. We are looking at your own individual situation. And that individual situation, we have to go by the five regulations that we have been put under guide for. And and I don't see that we can say yes to all five of those items. On, you know, unfortunately, I mean, what you guys did looks really nice, but when it's not, we're not able to say yes to all five of the conditions. That's where our difficulty is, comes into effect. Because these are our guidelines.
But also, oh, you have to voice the comments, sir.
Right, but you know, and that's, that's where the zoning board itself would be the one that is responsible and would put about that change. We're looking at your individual situation and looking at how, if we can grant a variance, an individual variance with these five requirements that we have.
Good thoughts?
I'm, I'm, right, like that, right? That's, yeah.
At the zoning commission, planning commission.
Okay.
That would be the people who would change, you know, maybe come up with things that there would, might be unique circumstances that they need to address because of dead-end roads, but.
Does it say anything in there about if they widen their existing driveway? He doesn't have any of that listed in there, right?
That's not the variance that they're requesting.
If they tried widening the driveway, that was right up next to my house. There's not a lot of widening, sincerely, there. I mean, it is what it is. It's all my late drive, because it's quite a business. Yeah.
Looking at the property lines, too, and the property lines are really close to buildings and stuff in that section.
We have a lot of that in this city. What I read in this, the variance will not significantly is not, will not significantly detrimental to the adjacent property in the surrounding neighborhood. The variance will not impair the intent and the purpose of this chapter. The things I'm picking out here, the variance, such variance is necessary for the preservation enjoyment of the substantial property right similar to the possessed of the properties in the same zoning district, which is zoning one. And in the vicinity, the possibility of increased financial return shall not in itself be deemed sufficient to warrant this variance. And I can see that you're not looking for you're looking for a I can see a better appearance of more safety. Not tearing up your lawn in the mud. Or your lawn you probably don't even use.
No, no.
Yeah. It's not like you're pulling into your kid's play yard or something. Exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of the specific property on the effective date of the ordinance from which this chapter is derived. And it's a house, it's, you said, 39 years old.
1939.
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of old houses in town like that. One car in. You're looking at. He can't tell you, oh, you can't have four cars. That's not, but it's happened.
So it says that the secondary driveways and driveways with widths greater than 40% of the width of the lot are in violation of section 32 623 and 32616 of the zoning, and that's what they're looking for a variance on. And a lot of time we just kind of went through all four or all five of the things that we needed to do. So do you want to just do that again? And if anybody's got any comments on it, we can just put it in there?
Well, so item number one is that there are extraordinary conditions that exist on this property that don't exist in other properties. We, we have already done the public comments. We know that. Okay, are there extraordinary conditions that exist on this property that don't exist on other properties? That's the, that's the question.
In my opinion, yes.
You know, there are no other houses that have this?
I don't know about the other houses, but I believe that.
Well, that's not, we're not asking about this. We're saying, are there other, is this an extraordinary circumstance that other people aren't facing?
I believe it. I do.
I believe they are facing it.
Yeah, I mean, just like you said on your road, and then how you, you even said that there's, when you drove around, there was a lot of people parking in their yards and stuff, so it is something that is issue throughout the city. So it's not.
It's not unique to this house. There are other houses that have a similar, similar thing.
The other houses, I think in that, you have driveways in front of their houses. Where your house is built almost on the city lot right away. Pretty close, it seemed to me anyways. Yeah, so you don't have an option of putting a driveway in front. You don't have the option of expanding your single driveway. And yet you have a spot for six years on the lawn.
But that's not, that's not any different than any other places they're facing in town.
Right.
So that makes one, it's not an extraordinary circumstance for this individual property, because there's other properties that have the same issue.
There's other properties that have the same issue, and they don't have an inch of room on the other side of their house. That's for sure.
So, do we have a consensus on this? Are we still? Is this a unique situation for this house?
I don't think it's a unique situation for the house.
And it is, I don't believe it is either.
I agree.
So if we, if we say no to that one, then we don't need to go through the other four, because it's, even if the other four are yes, it's, as soon as we say no to any one of the five conditions, then we are obligated to deny the variance request.
One more thing. The variance will not impair the intent or purpose of this chapter. So, what does that mean?
So the, the, the chapter, the so he addresses that in, I believe it's his or five?
He stated that we are concerned that crowding the residential front yard with additional parking may impair the ordinance intent and purpose, specifically the requirements of section 32616. They should be taken into consideration. Input from the public collected during the public hearing may be helpful in this regard. But that's still just one of five.
We have a consensus on that first one that's no. There is a motion on the table for us to deny the variance request. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
All in favor of the motion to deny? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No?
Oh.
Yep. All right, Ms. Powell?
No.
Mr. Jern again?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes three to two to deny the variance. We do not have any other business before us today, and other than the communications that we've already received, I don't think April's or any other communication you need to share with us. Okay. All right, I make a motion to adjourn. Is there support for that? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Thank you. We are adjourned.